We'll call this work session Monday, December 12th to order invocation given by Mr. Kenner and pledge allegiance by myself.
Almighty God, we give you thanks and praise for your great goodness towards us. We ask you to be with the mayor and council this evening as they go about the public business, lead, guide, and direct them at this meeting. We ask you to be with families in the city who have lost loved ones. We ask you to bless the parades that are about to happen later this evening, keep everyone safe and happy. These things we ask, in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing tonight is the public hearing for the rezoning on property on Phillips Drive. This is the time and place for the public hearing. Is there anyone here for this? Anyone here against this? Okay. I'm gonna kinda go over the public hearing rules. I'll give Ms. Tipton a chance to speak her case, and then anyone who wants to speak for it or against it, we'll let you come up. We do a three minutes, so if somebody else has already spoke about that, try to make sure you don't waste your three minutes on the same thing, okay? So, Ms. Tipton?
We're asking for the property on Phillips Drive to be rezoned from an R1 to an R3, which gives them the leverage to put more houses over there. I've heard some rumblings about Gant Hill Road. Gant Hill is not in this request. It's a single-family residential home site. I'm not sure of the road frontage, but they couldn't get two houses on that if they wanted to. This is not in the request, just the property on Phillips Drive. And the D.R. Horton guys are not here tonight, so that's all I need to say.
D.R. Horton did send a letter to each one.
Yeah, they cannot use that law for ingress or egress or as a construction entrance. My lawyer said that, and so did their lawyers.
Okay, alright, thank you. And I guess it'd be easier just to do the for and then against. So, anyone else for this wanna speak? Go ahead.
Alright, so Scottsboro, we're growing, right? We've got these retails, and retail jobs moving in, right? These people need places together. So, we're in the middle of growth, irregardless of, or excuse me, regardless of what our feelings about that growth are going to look like. So, with the Horton project, I wish we had some sort of direction for what that growth looks like. It's not gonna be low-income houses for these people to build and stay in, it's gonna be a nice middle-class home. As a realtor here in Jackson County, that's what I'm seeing. I'm representing people that are coming from all over the nation. I represented someone from California just the past week, but we wouldn't. Our growth is here, it's on our doorstep. What that growth looks like is gonna be up to us, right? So, I think that 107 homes is just a drop in the bucket, to be honest with you. We're gonna need more than that. I would like for Scottsboro to look like Scottsboro does right now for the rest of my life, for the rest of my girl's life, and so on and so forth, but that's just not realistic. That's not the world that we live in, and whether or not Scottsboro looks like a nice middle-class community, or whether or not Scottsboro looks like an overflow of other communities for their low-income people, that's our decision. We make that decision now, not only for us, but for our children as well. So, that's why I'm for it, that's why I hope that we have it, and that's why I hope that it pushes forward. So, I understand, you know, everyone has different opinions. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Anyone else here wanna speak on for it?
I'd like to reiterate what Travis just said. I'm also in the real estate industry. We have an extreme shortage of homes right now, and I guess it's real easy to oppose something if you already have one. But there's a lot of people out here moving in from all over the country. My last four sales have been from out of state. People are coming here, you cross the state line in Tennessee, you go up 15 to 20 percent, you go over to Georgia, you go up about 15 percent. The west, the Colorado River Basin is going dry. People are searching for homes, and they found us, our little spot of heaven, they say, but they call us Scotts Country here, and they just wanna come be part of our community. They're bringing a work ethic with them. The people I've worked with have a good work ethic, they're not coming here deadbeat, they're not coming here looking for handouts or freebies, they're coming here looking for housing. So, I hope that the council will consider this and just help us get this growth that we need in here, that we can, I know we have more than one project going in Scottsboro right now, I think it's a great thing. We do need housing, and I appreciate y'all supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here wanna speak on this, on behalf of this? Okay? Anyone here wanna speak against it?
Alright. My name is Ralph Ayers, and I'm here to oppose the R3 zoning of this property, and I guess I'm the unofficial spokesperson for our group, so we're not gonna take 27 minutes. If you'll give me just a little bit of leeway on my timeframe.
That'd be great, yeah.
We'll expedite this and get it done. Anyway, with the proposed change of zoning, there's a timeline, we presume, that's associated with this. First, if the council approves the change, then the property will be sold to D.R. Horton. Okay, now you have a property that is an R3, that's wide open, that if their plan, after it goes to the planning commission, if it does not get approved, now you have a property sitting there that's owned by a company in Huntsville that is wide open. If you'll look at your zoning things, what can go in an R3 property is scary, especially putting it next to an R1 property. Interesting enough, if you look at the zoning maps of Scottsboro, there are no other areas that R3 properties are next to an R1, and adjacent to an R1. Couple of examples of R3 properties are the city properties off Willow Street, and also Backbone Ridge off of Snodgrass Road. Those are R3. Nowhere else in Scottsboro is there an R3 directly adjacent to R1. Now, at a previous meeting, you were kinda dangled a carrot of a possible half a million dollars of property taxes. Let me give you a little more realistic figure of that. Currently, a 3,000-square-foot house on nine-tenths of an acre, the property tax on that house is $1,427. Of that $1,427, the city gets $777. Now, if you take all of these 104 houses that are gonna be 1,700 to 2,000 square foot, and they're not all gonna be that, let's use the larger amount, the 2,000, their tax would be $954. Of that, you get half, which is $500. Times that by 104 units, it's $52,000. Now, that's more than you're getting now out of her $400 a year taxes, but significantly less than the half a million dollars that you were dangled. Okay? So, we got a couple of issues there. There are several safety issues with the traffic on Phillips Drive, and I know that several of you live in the area, you drive on Phillips Drive, if you meet opposing traffic, guess what? One of you's going to the ditch, alright? Measuring that road, it's 19 foot across, right at the property. I believe somewhere in the zoning of Scottsboro, it says secondary road should be 20 foot. Okay, now somebody pulling out of the new property onto the road, they're pulling into the other lane of traffic. Another issue that you have is the rise that's in the road, coming from 35. It's 179 feet from the edge of that property line. Some studies show that dry payment at traffic traveling 40 miles an hour, which is about the average these people travel coming off of 35, going straight to Hood Avenue, and don't wanna stop at that stop sign, takes 120 feet. When that road is wet, it doubles to 240 feet. Now you have somebody pulling out of there, somebody coming that crest, hitting the stop, their brakes, and they're gonna have an accident. So, our question for this is, who fixed the infrastructure? Does the city fix it to make it better? Property owner? Or do we just let it go and see what happens? You know, we don't know. So, that's another issue that, you know, comes along. With the addition of the concentration of smaller homes in this neighborhood, and everybody says that, you know, they're starter homes, and we understand that, we're not against progress in Scottsboro. We want housing, and we just don't feel that this concentration of homes in this area is a good thing for Scottsboro. Or the possibility of not getting their plan approved by the planning commission. Because again, if you have an R3 property, it's wide open and cart blanch. Look it up, the things that you can put on an R3 property besides housing. We don't necessarily want businesses which can go on an R3 next to this area. Also, you know, we just hope that, you know, you'll listen to our pleas. Another thing we realize is that, okay, nobody's gonna come into this property and build 3,000 and 4,000-square-foot houses, because you're directly across from a trailer park, and you're adjacent to two dilapidated duplex homes that are torn, should be torn down, but are not. So, nobody's gonna wanna build that. We just ask for some sort of concession to maybe reduce the number of houses here. You know, we would gladly take new housing in the area, but we just feel like this concentration of 104 houses in this small area, especially on this road with issues already, we just don't feel that it's a thing that's needed for Scottsboro. Thank you.
Thank you. So, was there anyone else that? Okay, one more.
My name's Will Shelton. I live at 913 Gant Hill Road. My property directly adjoins the property that's being proposed to be rezoned. I'm not opposed to progress. I'd love to see homes in Scottsboro, I think it's a great thing, I think it's the right direction. I guess the problem I have is, everybody that you hear from that's opposed to this are the people that's directly impacted by it. The people that you hear from that are for this, such as realtors, the seller, the potential buyer developer, are people who stand to make money on this, not opposed to making money. Think it's a good thing. The problem is, these people, other than the realtors, the owner, the developer, they're not citizens of Scottsboro. We are. You're our voice. You know, a lot of times when candidates run for office, one of the things they like to say is, "I wanna be the citizen's voice, the voice of the people." Well, I'm asking you to be my voice. You represent us, the citizens, we're the citizens who are directly impacted by this. Like Ralph said, we're not opposed to houses. If R3 to get 107, 104 houses, why can't we do R2 possibly, and reduce the number to 80,000? I'm just throwing numbers out there, but you see where I'm headed. If it's just a money-making thing, why don't we look out for the citizens, the people that are directly affected by this, and take our considerations into account? And that's all I ask, is just, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak on this? Okay. Anyone on the council have any questions or comments on this?
I got one of, Ms. Tipton?
Yes.
The reason to switch from R1, it's currently R1 right now, right? And to go to R3, what's the reason?
To get it to be able to build smaller houses and not have as much road frontage. And the flat amount that you all saw was just an overlay. They're not guaranteed that they can get 104 or 106 in there. That was just a suggestion, you know, that remains to be seen. I've not done all the due diligence.
Now, my next question is for Mr. Little. The R3, does that include apartments where the person could build apartments?
It can be single-family if they can dwell, duplexes, not apartments.
Duplexes, not apartments. Got you. Okay, thank you. Ma'am?
D.R. Horton, I only deal with single-family residential homes. I asked them point-blank about that, that we didn't want apartments over there, condos or whatever. And I really want to go further and to say this, these people have hunted on my property, they have fished, they have burned my lawn, they have taken the fence down, and bow hunted over there, and it's, the party's over.
Alright.
You're being accused of something that...
Yeah, this is, yeah, let's not go on this. This is all about the rezoning and rezoning only. And so, if no one else has any questions or comments about the rezoning part, then we're gonna close.
I have a question. Is there any way to attach the R3 reclassification to a certain project? And just, you know, once that, once that classification has been granted, it is only applicable to this specific project, specifically to the guidelines that are approved by your law or the planning commission? Is that possible?
I don't think so, under the process that we're undergoing right now. There was a planned unit development, however, that involved a rezoning that went to the planning commission. It ultimately failed, but in that situation, what the council requested was that the property owners and the homeowners associations on Goose Pond Island get together with the developer, and they came up with a win-win situation that everybody was pretty much in agreement for. Then unfortunately, the money fell through. The zoning remains the same, but the planned unit development aspect of it, the restrictions that were placed in it by that joint recommendation remain the same. Now, in a standard rezoning, Mr. Ayers was right, you can't, the council can't do that like you are suggesting, I think, sir. But if, for example, this went to the planning commission, and a planned unit kind of thing, and the planning commission recommended to the council certain things with, out of the ordinary restrictions, the council, I think, could do it.
So, it's just red tape?
I'm not saying it's red tape, I'm just saying, there are different laws and different statutes, and if you're going from here to five points, there's several ways to get there.
Sure. I live off the proper road, there's no doubt the infrastructure needs to be upgraded to build sustain. Like, that's kinda a different category.
Yes, sir.
Alright, any, council, any more questions or anything? Alright, so this will be moved to a January 9th meeting. Of course, there can't be a vote for 15 days, and we don't have another meeting until January 9th anyways. So, this will be moved to a January 9th meeting. Okay. Alright, number two. Discuss ordinance related to sleeping in parked vehicles, tents, or makeshift camps on private lot of another or on a public property. Mr. Dahl, you can go over this a little bit.
Yes, we, been having some concerns, complaints. The police are, on a daily basis, have complaints about people camping. There's several places behind Walmart, up on Scott Hill, Scott Cemetery, up on the hill. Just recently, some of you might have noticed a tent under the viaduct of the Broad Street exit. So, we, I looked up some ordinances, and this particular one was kinda modeled after Huntsville, but I thought we would need some kind of rule or regulation regarding camping within our city. The concerns I have are potential criminal activity, sanitation, of course, and just the overall appearance for visitors and our residents of Scottsboro. And most of all, safety for our citizens. So, we have this ordinance here, and you guys can look it over if you'd like to add or take away anything. But we need something, something that the police can use to move some of these people along before we end up with a whole community.
Anyone have any questions, comments on this?
I know. Ralph, if this ordinance goes through and somebody is caught with a tent somewhere, what would be their punishment?
Well, they would be asked to leave, I would presume, first, and with the threat of either jail or a fine, or a ticket of some sort.
Well, these people probably would like jail, but they don't know what their tent is. But if they're fined, they won't have any money to pay for it. So, I see that being a problem.
Or we can let it go on. We've been dealing with this for years, and I think it's gonna get, as we grow, as Huntsville spreads out and Chattanooga, we're gonna see more of them.
I have a question. So, when somebody calls now and complains, and they go, and if it's up behind the cemetery or behind Walmart, and there's a count there, and they're causing problems, what can the police do now?
Right now, if they're on private property, which I think Scott Cemetery, part of it, where they're at is private property, they gotta find the homeowner, see if they're okay with it, and if they're not, do a letter banning them from the property, and then the police ask them to leave or face arrest.
What about, like, under the bridge now?
On the bridge, we try to move them on, and right now, it's just a bluff, really. We don't...
So, there's no meat to it?
No teeth, no.
So, Mr. Dahl, my situation with that is, where are these people gonna go? I mean, I understand that they don't have anywhere to go, but just to, do we take them to the next town, or do we provide something here for those people to get on their feet?
There's several groups, church groups, more than any, and then Mr. Sherlin, he helps out with the homeless population here. And a lot of times, though, they don't, you know, we give them these recommendations, and they don't, they just wanna do their own thing.
And Mr. Sherlin wanted to come tonight, but he's having to get ready for the parade. He wanted to come and discuss some alternatives to homeless, but it wouldn't replace this, this is just...
Right. There's several avenues out there, it's just a matter of if that person or persons...
Willing.
Willing to do that.
Okay. I understand that.
This is something we'll probably need to go over a little more. I don't wanna put that straight onto a meeting tonight, let's put that on January 9th meeting and give you time to go over it a little more before, between now and then. Okay? Alright, number three, discuss the resolution to authorize insurance of the new city credit cards and amend the list of city depositories. Ms. Phillips, you can go over that.
And the current credit cards that we have are issued with FNB Bank. So, at the end of the year, those are gonna close, and we need to get new cards with Cadence Bank. So, this resolution will just authorize the mayor, finance director, and myself to execute the documents to issue the new cards.
And you see...
And also, we need to amend the list of city depositories to include Cadence Bank, since Bancorp has changed their name.
So, you have in your packet the list of the credit cards the city handles. Have any questions on that? And then also, we'll need to move, to make Cadence as a city depository also. There's no questions on that, we can move both of those till tonight's meeting. Alright, number four, discuss the solid waste department budget requests. Mr. Leble.
I think each of you've got the package together. There's two items that need to be addressed. One of them's a repair for a D65 dozer. The plant we have down, it's not operable. This is a machine we use every day. Since we're down one compact of this, it's been used at our CMD on a daily basis. You see the repair estimate, of course, it's in the package. But during this time, we've also submitted a rental for one month to get a dozer in here while this one's being fixed, at the cost that you see there also.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Leble on this? He's gonna be asking for the $5,800 for the dozer rental for the month. Then you'll see the dozer repair, and he has a quote, but we'd be looking at up to $28,000 to repair the dozer, depending on what the bid's coming in at. Anyone have any questions on that? And then you...
The last item, of course, is, you'll see the security system for the solid waste office, it's in the amount of $4,046. It's pretty self-explanatory, but if you get any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
And then you got the upgrade of the security system at solid waste, which would be in the amount of $4,046.49. Anyone have any questions on that? No questions, we'll put those on tonight's meeting. Number five, discuss the 2023 employee holiday schedule. Ms. Phillips, will you go over the 2023 holidays?
Martin Luther King Day, January 16th, Good Friday, April 7th, Memorial Day, May 29th, Juneteenth Day, June 19th, Independence Day, July 4th, Labor Day, September 4th, Veterans Day, November 10th, Thanksgiving, November 23rd and 24th, Christmas, December 25th and 26th, New Year's Eve, January 1st, and New Year's Day, January 2nd.
You see the list of employee holidays for 2023? Anyone have any questions on that? No questions, we'll move that to tonight's meeting also. That will conclude the meeting, work session. Give me just about two minutes, and I'll have your council meeting ready. We're adjourned. Alright, so we've got eight things.
You got all eight?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, you got all eight? Oh, 10 things, yeah. It's 10 things, we've got two already. See, I went...
You broke a couple of those down.
Yeah, I broke down the credit cards, and I broke down, because you gotta have separate ones, right? So, I broke those down, and I broke down the dozer rental, and repaired the dozer that we have.
Yeah, I did too, but I didn't, you got two different?
Well, I didn't actually break it down. Oh, yeah, I did, I broke it down, broke them, 'cause I'll need them.
National Team Bass Association.
This one's on excess sales. Excess city goods. Sales stats, alright. And I'll just read this out before we do the adoption of the agenda. But I need to change these numbers, so I don't, so I will mess that up. Doing what they want. Doing what they want and really want. I got one, oh, that's two. It is just nine. I just skipped that completely. I just changed it. It is just a nine. And some...
Okay, good. Yes.
Okay. We'll call this council meeting Monday, December 12th to order. We'll dispense with formalities. Ms. Phillips, we do the roll call.
Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Ms. Tolliver?
Here.
Mr. Ashburn?
Here.
Ms. Frederick?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here. We'll move to adopt the agenda. Before we adopt, I'll go over it. Number one, you have your public hearing for the Wabahoe Food Mart. Two, you have the fishing tournaments, two and three. Two being the National Team Bass Association, the Anglers Outpost and Marine that's asking for 8,000. Number three being the Bass Tennessee Nation Kayak Anglers that they're asking for 2,500. Number four, the issuance of the credit cards through Cadence. Number five, to authorize Cadence as a city depository. Number six, the dozer rental of $5,800 that would come out of excess sales tax. Number seven, up to $28,000 to repair the dozer that would come out of excess sales tax. Number eight, the upgrade of the security system at Solid Waste in the amount of $4,046.49. And number nine, to approve the 2023 employee holidays. So do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's adopted. Move to approve the previous minutes? Do I have a motion to approve this, the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. There's no old business, so first thing, a new business, the public hearing for the alcohol license for the Wabahoe Food Mart. This is time and place for the public hearing. Is anyone here for this? Anyone here against this? Ms. Phillips, will you do the investigation report?
The applicant is Raj Patel, top of license, retail beer and wine, off-premise. The establishment is Wabahoe Food Mart located at 1713 South Broad Street. There were four businesses surveyed with no objections. There were five residents surveyed, one objection, and four no objections. Nearest church and school footage requirements were met. License application is in order. Health, fire, and building inspections comply and zoning verification complies.
Thank you. This will conclude the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two, the Anglers Outpost and Marine National Team Bass Association Tournament, they're asking for an amount of $8,000 and that would come out of tourism grant. So do I have a motion on the floor for this tournament?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion in the amount of... Frederick, you have a motion for the $8,000?
$6,000.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor for $6,000 to offer for the Anglers Outpost and Marine National Team Bass Association Tournament? Do I have a second on that? Hearing none, this motion dies for lack of second. Okay. Number three, the Bass Tennessee Nation Kayak Anglers Tournament, they were asking an amount of $2,500. Do I have a motion to approve this tournament?
I'll make that motion.
And you're making a motion in the amount of?
$2,500.
$2,500? Do I have a second?
A second.
A second? Any discussion on this tournament? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four, the issuance of credit cards through Cadence. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the credit cards? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, authorize Cadence as a city depository. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six, authorize the $5,800 for the dozer rental for one month that would come out of excess sales tax. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, authorize up to $28,000 to repair the dozer. This would come out of excess sales tax. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, upgrade the security system at Solid Waste in the amount of $4,040, $4,046.49. And this would come out of excess sales tax. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, approve the 2023 employee holidays. Do I have a motion to approve those holidays?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the holidays? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That'll conclude the meeting. Delegations, you've already spoke on that. Do you want to speak again?
Sure.
Okay, just taking sure. All right, thank you. No other delegation. We've got to report. Mayor?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I've got tonight is to encourage everyone to stick around for the Christmas parade. Let me get leave a poll.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Dahl?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tolliver?
I don't have anything. Only thing, I do have one thing. I do, I do. I, I want to, again, wish everybody a Merry Christmas because I won't see nobody until New Year's. And I just want to tell the people I work with up here, thank you for all you do for our city. And thank you, citizens, for all you do, being patient with us.
Thank you. Ms. Frederick?
I just want to thank everybody that came out and say Merry Christmas. Enjoy your holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Ashburn?
I just want to say that it appeared that everybody had a great time at the Christmas party for the city employees. That's the first time that has happened. And I got nothing but praises from the citizens, or the employees and their family that, that were there.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone that there'll be no other meetings this month. Next meeting will be January 9th. There'll be a work session and meeting that night. Also, a work session and meeting January 23rd. So that'd be the meeting schedule for January. Also, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hope you enjoyed the parade. And so, you say you wanted to...
Yeah, sure. On behalf of the employees, we just want to thank y'all for giving us an employee Christmas dinner this year. I know everybody had a good time and we look forward to next year.
That's great. Thank you. So, with all that said, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.